When I first came to Thunder Bay, I decided to move my family. I don't know if some of you know about the tragic tragedy that happened when I came here. My husband passed away en route. So I had to take over the drilling company and I'd been working alongside my husband for many years and I was pretty much the one that got the contracts. So we settled in Thunder Bay and we had two drills. And right now, five years later, I'm up to seven drills. And still not on Prozac. I've got probably over 60 people working for us all together between the two drills. And we're working all over Northwestern Ontario. The one thing that I'm proud of is that I have a lot of morals and a lot of beliefs. And one of my beliefs is I am from Thunder Bay now and I've lived all over the world and proved to everybody in Europe that Canadians are the best drillers. And I believe in a local economy. I believe in giving back to my community and I've done that several times. I hire all local people. If I work in Greenstone, I will support the Greenstone region. Right, Dina? And I have supported the Confederation College Drill Helper Program. And we've hired quite a few guys and just as Jason was talking, we have several success stories of guys that started off in the lumber industry, went into Confederation College, decided to go as a drill helper and we took them on and they are now drilling. I actually have three drillers and two foremans that came out of the Drill Helper course. And they're doing an amazing job. I have no complaints. This area was never known to be mining. It was more forestry. And when it came here six years ago, we were told that. We went to one of the suppliers and they said, "Oh, no. We're a forestry company. We don't deal with the mining industry." I said, "Okay, we'll see you later." So we moved on to the next company to supply us with stuff. And they supported us fully. And like I said today, between the two companies, locally, I spend with North Star Drilling, I've put money back into this community in the sum of $1.9 million locally to the suppliers here in Thunder Bay. For Cobra Drilling, I put $1.5 million back in the community. And that goes to going to buy furniture because I have houses up in Duberville right now. So I go into a local store and I have to buy 14 beds. So when I go into a supplier, they think I'm completely crazy and I don't like shopping anymore. And it's like, yeah, I need 14 beds and I need a big screen TV and I need couches and I need my guys to be well, you know. Then I gotta go get sheets and everything else. So they just love me. But anyway, that's the story about our company. I'm proud of my guys and I know a lot of you want to know about drilling. And I'm going to give you a crash course. It's we drill holes in the ground and we bring up rock. And that's what we do. And we sell the rock to the mining companies. And they go and they send it out for assays. And this is the only way you know you're going to have a mine is if you drill it. You can speculate that it's there, but you don't know until you drill it. So that's what we do. We're not working on any of the major projects that are out there right now. We are working on quite a few smaller projects. But I keep trying to get in closer and closer to town, but it always takes me further out of town. But you know what? I bring my boys with me. The drilling industry is one where we need, for the guys, the common core is what is needed. They need to have first aid, fall arrest, WMS, because we do deal with chemicals such as muds and it's nothing that's toxic, but you need to know it's certain applications you put down the hole in order to increase production and other stuff and that you don't want, you don't understand yet. But anyway, it's a great industry. You learn you can go anywhere. You never know what you're going to encounter in a 12-hour shift. When the phone rings, I never know what I'm going to encounter. And sometimes it's quite interesting and there's never a dull moment. The pays are, it's a good paying job, but as I was talking to Jason, it's hard work. And he said he didn't give up. And I've noticed a lot of the guys right now, they'll last about two weeks and then they can't take it anymore. It's a job that can kill you if you're not careful. It's a job that you're away from your families, you're cold. I know how hard it is for the guys, but it's worth it in the long run. Their bills are paid, their kids are happy, their families are happy. It's an industry. Anybody see Armageddon? Those are my drillers. So yeah, they play hard. And sometimes I know with our company, there's been four guys in the last 10 years that have passed away due to the effects of drilling. And when I say the effects, I'm trying to change the way people perceive drillers. And it's, drillers used to be haywire. They worked hard, they played hard. And sometimes a little too hard that it took their lives. And I don't want to be the one to call the families and say, "Okay, your husband is, you know, he got killed at the drill." So safety is a very important thing. And a lot of times we think, "Oh, it's not going to happen." But last year, a guy that used to work for me, came over to see me, wanted to come back. And I offered him a job. And he said, "Okay, I'll think about it and I'll give you a call tomorrow." Well, the next day, he decided to go with somebody else. He went to work and this guy was 22 years old. He had a six-month-old baby at home. And he bent over and there's a rod that's turning really fast. And when he bent over, his strap from his coveralls got caught in the rod and pulled him in and ripped off his arm. And he almost died. And when you look at that, it's like he's lucky. He's a success story that he didn't die, but this is what this job does. I'm not going to sugarcoat this job. Like I said, you're cold, it's dangerous, but it's a lot of fun. And once you get a taste of it, and I told Jason, I said, "The big thing with the drillers is if you drink from the casing water, then you're hooked." And I guess I'm hooked. I will leave it at that. If there's any questions, don't be shy to come and ask me. Yeah, I'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barb. Just before I call on my next guest speaker, I do have to make a correction. And I knew it was inevitable to happen when you gave me a microphone for this long. I was going to misspeak at one point during the day. And it was very quickly brought to my attention when I was referring back to a number of people I worked at Inmet, that I saw some old faces in the crowd. Not a good thing to say. So I would like to say what I really meant earlier. And that is I can see some very treasured faces from my past in the audience. And actually, the three, one of them was quite gracious and didn't point that out to me. But the three who did bring that to my attention, I'd like to just bring everyone else's attention too. Sharon Guerin from Inmet Mining, who is now at North American Palladium, Lactazil. And Gail Gochet, who is now actually here with Musclewhite Goldcorp. And my husband, who is in the back, Jack Richardson, who is now at Musclewhite as well. And that's a perfect segue to our next guest speaker because he is one of those very treasured faces from my past. And it is Mr. Brad Corrigan. He is the general manager at Lactazil Mine, North American Palladium. And it's my pleasure to welcome here today, Brad.
I might as well freak this up right off the bat. How do you do this much? I can't get this sucker.
I'll defer to someone who doesn't know.
How do you get it up so high, John? Okay, we'll try it this way. Anyways, my name is Brad Corrigan. I am a general manager at North American Palladium. And I can stand up here and talk about all the successes that I've seen throughout my career, both personal and with some different personalities, such as Madge, obviously, Sharon, Gail, sorry I didn't recognize you there earlier. And Jack, I saw him floating through here, but he doesn't hold still long enough to say hi to. Anyways, you know, there's four individuals that have a success story of their own. What I'd like to bring up to people up to speed with is the fact of the mining industry in itself. I've been in the industry, I'm in my 40th year in the industry. And I know Madge alluded to that point earlier in her comment. I was the one that didn't say anything about how much older we look. However, the industry has learned lots in the last, I'm going to say the last 20 years. The last time I remember any type of focused effort and training was in 1990, '91, '92 in that area, that timeframe. And it's very indicative of what's taken place today. I've always had this theory, you know, it's my own theory, of people between 18 and 26, 27 years old, they're like sponges. You can teach them anything. You can't teach them enough. People from 27 to about 47, you can't tell them anything. Not all, obviously, but most. Yeah, and I was like that too. From 47, 48 years old and up, all we want to do is retire. So all we want to do is mentor people, show them how to do it. What's taken place today is those 20-year-olds, 18, 20, 25-year-olds of the 1990s are now the 40-year-olds, 45-year-olds. Those are the people, that's a skill set that we're lacking. What the industry has learned, and this is where the success has come from, I'm going to say since about 2005, is the fact that we realize there's such a skill shortage, not only in Canada or in Ontario or Northwestern Ontario, but globally, as John alluded to earlier. And for some reason, the industry in 2005, 2006, we come to this understanding that we're probably short 80,000 people in the industry, just in North America alone. In 2008, 2009, the global economy, we no longer needed that many people. However, when we started back up and we ramped up very quickly in 2009, 2010, the latter part of 2009, all of a sudden, we were surprised that, jeez, we're short 80,000 people. Well, there was two years that we didn't train any people. Then if you go back further, 20 years, we never trained anyone. My main focus now is to train as many young people as I possibly can. And I say that quite publicly, obviously, but also I feel that with my heart because there's no doubt I want to retire. You know, secondly, there's certain skill sets. The mining industry absolutely needs engineers, whether they're chemical, metallurgists, electrical, mining engineers, civil engineers. We need this type of skill set going forward. John quoted something that I'd said in an interview earlier in the week in the paper. And I mean that. You know, we've been painted with a brush that's fairly invisible, or very visible, I should say, for a lot of years, saying the industry is a dirty industry. The bulk of the positions have nothing to do with the mine site alone. They're in corporate offices in Thunder Bay, Toronto, Winnipeg, Vancouver, Johannesburg, and you just go around the world. Those people, a lot of those people have never set foot in a mine, yet they work for some major mining operations. And I think that's where people have to understand that the industry needs to focus on first educating the public and then educating themselves. That we absolutely need the younger people to get into the system, if you will. And the only way that we will be successful is if the younger people are successful. And I think with the industry right now, it's only, I'm going to say in the last three to four years, that we've really noticed and recognized that this shortage is actually hurting us big time. So as much as Peru, Argentina, we're very fortunate. At this point, particular point in my career, I can pretty well go where I like. I'd like to share that knowledge and expertise with a lot of young people, anybody under 50 or willing to, you know, show. But we need to get the interest generated in the mines again. And that's my main focus in life right now is just, well, to get Lactazil up and running, transition that, but also mentor younger people. Thanks.
Thanks, Brad, for joining us today. It's now my pleasure to introduce Barbara Kirby. Barbara is the Senior Director of Workforce Development with the Mining Industry Human Resource Council. The Mining Industry Human Resource Council completed the planning board's mining sector labor market research. Barbara is going to share the key findings of that study with us today. And we've allowed time after her presentation for a question and answer period. So please hold your questions until the end of her presentation and then kindly stand up wherever you're sitting and first introduce yourself, where you're from, and then your question to Barbara. So thank you very much. Help me welcome Barbara Kirby.
So I come bearing a variety of different and hopefully interesting documents that I'd like to share with you today. And I'm going to begin by putting them down on the table. And then I'm probably going to follow Brad's good example and take the microphone off the stand because I tend to like to move around when I talk a bit. Now, anybody who's in the audience that has any kind of background in mathematics or statistical analysis or labor market information has got to know what kind of a challenge I have facing me right now. I'm standing between you and your lunch with numbers. So what I'm going to try and do today is make them a little bit interesting and hopefully use the numbers in the way that they speak to me, which is that they tell me a story. And they point us in the direction that we might want to go in terms of addressing some of the joint problems that we all sitting here in the room have together. So first of all, I'd like to thank the North Superior Workforce Planning Board for inviting the Mining Industry Human Resources Council here today. And I would also like to say that unfortunately for you, I'm a slightly poorer substitute for Martha Roberts, who actually directed the study that we've completed. She is our Director of Research, but unfortunately wasn't able to be here today. And so I'm afraid you're stuck with me in the meantime to walk you through this process. But I hope I can assure you that you're in relatively good hands. I do have a background in economics. I'm sorry for those of you in the audience who don't like economists. And we're often called the dismal scientists, which I hope I'm not going to be dismal today. And I really, I'm excited to have the opportunity to help you walk through the research that we've done under the direction of the North Superior Workforce Planning Board. I am, as Madge mentioned, I'm the Senior Director of Workforce Development for the Mining Industry Human Resources Council. As I mentioned, I do have a master's degree in economics. And in fact, early on in my time with the Mining Industry Human Resources Council, I had the pleasure of helping to lead some of the development of the background forecasting model that we used to do the research. So I do have a fair grasp on what we're about to look at today. So I hope you'll bear with me for just a few moments if I start by pressing this button and hoping that it goes. Steve's going to drive. Okay, so just a few words about who the Mining Industry Human Resources Council is. We are a national, not-for-profit, non-governmental organization who work with the minerals and metals industry in Canada. We have a first 15-person secretariat. We're based in Ottawa. We have hundreds of industry leaders who volunteer their time to help develop some of the programs and services that I'll quickly give you an overview of before I go into the review of the Labor Market Information Program. Essentially, what our organization does is we assess the national HR challenges facing the mining and minerals exploration industry. And we help through collaborative efforts with our industry partners to develop solutions for those challenges. So can you go to the next slide, please? So some of our partners in developing the analysis that you'll see today, and also some of the solutions, programs, and products that I'll talk about include the major employers in the sector, national and provincial industry associations, organized labor groups, including unions, federal, provincial, and territorial governments, post-secondary education and technical training institutions, Aboriginal leaders and communities, and other interest groups as a community of interest in the mining sector. So I'm going to put my glasses on so I look a little more distinguished and squint a little less. Next slide, please. So the three broad programming areas, just first, the underpinning being that the Mining Industry Human Resources Council acts as a catalyst and leader in addressing, identifying and addressing human resources challenges for the industry. But three broad programming pillars, if you like. On the far right, attraction, retention, and transition, I'll give you a brief description of what those things are. The Skills Learning and Mobility Initiative in the center there. And then Research for Industry Sustainability. And I'll be giving you a lot more information about what goes on in that programming area. So if you can go to the next slide. Under Attraction, Retention, and Transition, essentially, this programming pillar for the Mining Industry Human Resources Council is about promoting mining as a career of choice. It is about an industry brand and promoting careers within the industry. It's about attracting additional workers to our industry. It's about retaining that talent once you have it there. And it's about assisting people with their transitions through the mining cycle and also in and out of mining, as Brad alluded to earlier. It's no secret to this industry that we're a hugely volatile market. And we are at the mercy of international commodity prices. And you'll see later on in the model development that it's very strongly driven. Employment in our industry is very strongly driven and pushed, if you like, by commodity prices. So the whole approach of transitioning people into our industry when we're booming and assisting them in staying within the industry when perhaps we're not booming quite so much. Pre-employment training programs are part of this programming package. And also transitional support, as I mentioned, for workers from other sectors to come into the mining industry, helping workers deal when mines close. And as we all know, mines do open and close over the course of the mining cycle. Next slide, please. So the middle pillar of the work that Mining Industry Human Resources Council does is all around skills, learning, and mobility. This is where our Canadian mining certification program does the majority of their work. This is a recognition program for skilled occupations. Now, I need to clarify that it's not for the recognized occupations, for example, the formal trades. It's also not for the recognized occupations such as engineering and metallurgy. These are for the traditionally unrecognized occupations. So we're talking about groups, occupational groups, such as underground miners, minerals processing operators, surface miners, the diamond driller crew. And this program is the first of its kind, launched last May, which is the very first national recognition program based on industry-driven national occupational standards. I have loads of information about both of those other two programming areas with me. And I will make sure through Madge that they're available for anyone who's interested. I've brought them with me here today. So then the final programming area is around Research for Industry Sustainability. And this is really the crux of the presentation that I'll be making to you this morning. Our flagship program in this area is the Mining Industry Workforce Information Network. That is our national forecasting model for the mining industry and their human resources And using that program as a basis, the Mining Industry Human Resources Council develops every year national forecasts, beginning in 2010. 2011, there was a new publication. In addition to that, we will be producing the next national report coming in July of this year. And as an added value to that, there is in fact an online tool on the website that you see on your screen. That website essentially allows users to go in from outside to play with the underlying assumptions that are used to forecast the labor market requirements and to see the differences by occupation, by province, and across a 10-year time horizon. In addition to that, we've done a number of custom LMI reports for a number of provincial mining associations and task force that are responsible for looking at labor shortages. One in British Columbia, at least two studies have been done in Saskatchewan. There was one done here in Ontario in 2009. We're currently completing one in Yukon. But I put a little asterisk beside that because the work that I'm going to talk to you about today is our first sub-provincial study that's been done. And this is really a cutting-edge partnership that has been struck with the Labor Force Planning Board here. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. Yeah, you can go ahead to the next slide. So I'm going to give you a quick overview. Is it working now? Great, thanks. So let's have a look at this magic crystal ball I've just described to you. What are we doing with this labor market forecasting system? And how do we produce this labor market information for the mining industry? Well, the Mywin system, ah. So the Mywin system is essentially, it's a unique program. There isn't another one like it in Canada. It's been custom designed for the mining and minerals industry. It's a fairly straightforward labor market information forecasting system for anyone who's familiar with those processes. It uses different variables to help to project what would drive employment in our industry. And therefore, we can distill out of changes in employment, what are going to be the hiring requirements of the individual employers in that industry. So you know, there's a number of drivers. They include things like the price of commodities, the productivity of capital invested in the industry, the productivity of labor working in the industry. Demographics, again, drive some of those forecasts around, we all know the story about the aging workforce and you'll hear it a couple of times more from me today. And some other key factors that help to drive employment. So I'll give you some pictures around what is, what acts as inputs into that forecasting system. But basically, the primary inputs are data from Statistics Canada, primarily both the labor force survey and also from the census data. Some of you will have known that last week, they made an announcement of the newly published census data from 2011 census. That gets done in a very staged release. So we're anxiously awaiting for when our turn comes up to grab our data out of that, plonk it into the system, and see what new estimates we can crank out. In addition to the StatsCan data, we do a large proportion of our own primary research, a lot of employer surveys, a lot of work with the provincial and territorial mining associations to collect information directly from employers, again, from all those major stakeholder groups, from educators in our field, from employers in the industry, from labor unions that work in the industry, and from a variety of other interest groups. In addition to that, there are a number of external and independent economic forecasts that get fed into the model. So for example, there's an international commodity price index that is generated by the World Bank. Those things also get fed into what we euphemistically call in Those things also get fed into what we euphemistically call in our office, the bread maker. So these are, this is the flour and the eggs and the butter and the milk that goes into the bread maker. On the other hand, what comes out at the other side is the question. So what can you do once you add all the flour and the eggs and the milk? Are you going to get a cake? Are you going to get a whole wheat bread? Are you going to get an English muffin? We're not quite sure. So the outputs that we aim at for our forecasting industry are three basic scenarios. So a baseline scenario, this is moderate growth projection, what would happen in the case that the industry sort of hums along at its normal rate. And then we look at a contractionary scenario, as Brad pointed out earlier when he was speaking. It's no secret to us that our industry's up and down and up and down and up and down. So what happens if commodity prices fall off the basement floor next week? Well, we look at a contractionary scenario so that we got some sort of confidence around what we're saying in our forecast. And then we also look at an expansionary scenario. We all know the story about developments in the Ring of Fire. We all know the stories about, you know, optimistic exploration activities out in British Columbia. Apparently, there's, you know, 22 major projects on the books out there that are ready to go next week. So you have to be ready to also see what happens if things take off. So the idea of this bread maker, if you like, is that we want to produce three different forecasts. So you can play a little game about what if, what happens if this, what happens if that? And that allows you to have, it gives you a range of forecasts, and it gives you a sense of confidence around what it is that you're forecasting. So then the third aspect of this is that we do these three scenarios, both for total employment in the industry as well as for the hiring requirements. So keep in mind, these are two different things. One is how many people work in the industry right now? The next question as an employer that's important to you is how many people are you going to have to hire in the next little while? And there are a number of factors that feed into that. So we look at both of those factors, and then those projections are done over a 10-year time horizon. So you'll see in the data that I'm about to present to you that what we've done is we have three scenarios, contractionary, a baseline, expansionary, and we do that, those projections, over the course of a 10-year period. So normally, the reports come out for two, five, and 10 years, but we do have them year over year as well. What we do have to be careful to do with this model is not to give too much credit to the minute detail that you can go down to. The change in employment from an individual month to the next month is perhaps a little bit too granular on the data to be able to really depend on that forecast in any kind of meaningful way. So those are my cautions to you. Coming soon, and what I'm about to give you a little bit of a sneak preview of today, is the Talent Availability Forecasting. In other words, the next question you ask after you ask, how many people do I need to hire next week, is where am I going to find these people, and how many are available now? So MIR has started to add to the MYWIN forecasting model to start to try and answer some of those questions around, where are those people coming from? Where are they likely to come from? And then what I'm going to finish up my presentation with is a couple of suggestions that we have to bring to this group around what kinds of strategies might be adopted to address the shortcomings between the demand for workers and the supply for workers. So let's take a quick step back, have a look at some of the sort of national trends and labor market challenges. One of the first ones is that the MYWIN research last July, published last July, is indicating that right now, at a national level, our projections are that over the next 10 years, we will need to hire approximately 112,000 workers across the industry, across 66 occupations, and across the country. The next thing is around the demographics, and this is not a new story to anybody, but in particular, what you need to know is that the mining industry is particularly hard-hit by our aging workforce. In the mining industry, approximately 40% of our workforce is over 50 years old. That is about five years older than the average for all industries in Canada. So that is a significant challenge for us. Third challenge, according to our employer surveys across the country, again, across a variety of different companies, across provincial boundaries, our employers are telling us that of the current workforce that they are holding human resources records for, over a third of them will be eligible to retire by 2015. And then the final question is, where are all the women? They're there. They're primarily working in administrative and clerical jobs in the mining industry, and we want to ask some questions around, how do we engage them better? How do we make the real careers in mining attractive to our women in our industry? Sorry, aging workforce again here. All right. So let me tell you a little bit about the study that I'm about to talk about today. So this is the North Superior Workforce Planning Board's study. This is really a cutting-edge study. This is going to be the first subprovincial forecast that's been produced by the MYWIN system, and we are extremely grateful to the North Superior Workforce Planning Board for engaging with us in cutting this, in slicing, let's go back to the bread analogy, in slicing this bread in a little bit, on a little bit different angle, and allowing us to look at the differences between an economic region and a province and the country as a whole, because there are strong differences from region to region, from province to province, and then looking at the challenge for the industry as a whole. So as I mentioned, it's been a partnership that has really enriched the MYWIN data system. It's, I hope, a proactive example for other regions in Ontario. The gauntlet has been thrown, and hopefully, we'll be able to, we'll be able to open up and look at some of the other regions, do some cross-regional comparison, and really genuinely look at what proactive strategies an individual district can put in place. And then the last thing is it really empowers the North Superior Workforce Planning Board to start creating some strategies and creating some solutions specific to this district around some of the challenges that come out of the data analysis. So the first step is to look at sort of an overview of the MYWIN system and some of the national factors that clearly will impact on the regional labor market requirements for this region. So some of these key factors include that the value of minerals and metals sector has varied up and down, but it genuinely contributes between 3% and 4.5% to the real gross domestic product of the country. So it's a significant economic driver for our country as a whole, that the global recession and the drop in demand and prices for the key commodities that are mined here has had a significant impact on both the production of metals and minerals in the country, but also unemployment in the industry. And further, that the fact that there is continuing uncertainty about what will happen with commodity prices, it makes forecasting, it makes forecasting employment a little more difficult, and that explains the very conservative approach we've taken to forecasting what the labor requirements are. So I'm qualifying all the data I'm going to show you today by saying, we've been very conservative in our estimates, and for good reason, because if we could all sit here and predict what was going to happen to commodity prices tomorrow, I don't believe that any of us would still be sitting in the room. I, for one, would be in Mexico on a beach with a pina colada in my hand. So we have to be somewhat cautious about what we're prepared to say around labor market forecasting in light of the uncertainty around some of the inputs. Remember the bread and the, I'm sorry, remember the flour and the eggs and the butter that's going into the bread machine? Given some of our uncertainty there, we have to be somewhat cautious about our outcomes as well. Here's an interesting graph, if you're a number geek like me. This is employment in the mining industry in Canada from 2005 to 2010, so a five-year period. And you can see what I'm talking about. If I, it's unfortunate, I didn't bring my other graph, because I have one that goes back for 50 years. And if you could see the volatility in the employment, you would be shocked, and some of you would be surprised that you've managed to stay with the industry as long as it has, because it's highly fluctuating. This is what the Commodity Price Index looks like next to that. So as you can see, there's a fairly close correlation. I mean, obviously, there's other factors that cause noise in employment, and it does different things, but, you know, you can sort of see that when commodity prices start to go up, well, surprise, surprise, you know, some of those mines that closed down earlier start to open up, they start hiring, employment goes up, commodity prices fall, people decide to temporarily suspend operations at mines, people get laid off. So it's not surprising that it kind of follows itself along. And if I, it's unfortunate that I didn't, wasn't able to bring it, but if I showed you the 40- and 50-year graph, you'd be even more surprised at how closely they follow each other along. So our research has shown this very strong relationship between commodity prices and employment in the mining sector. And then, so as a result, kind of global economic developments, because Canada is primarily a price-taker in the industry, our employment follows that without us having much in the way of control over what happens to those prices. So here are the labor market trends. Essentially, industry, oh, here are the labor, yes, sorry, here's the labor market trends. So basically, there's a number of factors. Industry is expanding, we know that. As commodity prices, you know, sort of start to recover after that, you know, terrible dip at the end of 2008, beginning of 2009, industry's starting to open their doors again, the drillers are out there drilling their cores, you know, there's going to be more mines developing. There's a number of mines in the approval process right now. We know there are things coming online. That baby boom bubble, I call it the triple B threat. Everybody knows the story. We hear it probably two times a night on the national news. We've got an aging workforce, we're all getting grayer. I, for one, can't wait to retire and go and lie on a beach, but, and so we all know that story. It's, we're, it's, we have an aging workforce. We got to figure out where we're going to replace those workforces. One of the key things that's happening there is that it's not just people that are retiring, it's skills and experience that are retiring. And what's coming in behind are younger and less experienced workers that haven't had that crossover time with the older generation of workers to get that on-the-job, hands-on, gut-feel experience that our real, true 20- and 30- and 40-year miners have under their belts. And that is a serious issue that we're not picking up in the data, but we absolutely have to pay attention to now. How are we going to transfer that know-how? And I'm not talking about what you learned while you were sitting in school. I'm talking about the gut feel. You know when you have your hand on the drill that something's wrong when something's wrong, and how do you teach those skills to a younger generation? We have a much younger-than-average retirement age, as I already pointed out, and therefore, our employers tell us over and over and over again that the focus has to be on attracting new workers and retaining the skill set that we've got in our industry now. This is really about the battle for talent. And it's a challenge, it's a challenge at a national level. It's also a challenge at a provincial level, and this is where it gets a little more complex, because it's not only a challenge with other countries or other industries, the battle for talent, it's a challenge, it's a battle between provinces. We all know about the great, you know, sucking hole in northern Alberta that's taking all our skilled workers, right? Everybody knows that. We're competing with one another, and then take it down to a regional level within a province, and we're competing in our own provinces with each other for skilled workers. So it's coming from outside the sector, it's coming from outside the province, it's coming from outside the region, it's coming from outside your individual firm. You're competing with the firm down the road for the same talent. So it gets complex. The smaller and smaller your units of analysis get, the more complex the problem gets. Okay. So let's look at some of the national data quickly to give you some sort of perspective on where we're at. So what you're seeing right now is the forecast of the change in total employment. So those dark bars there are the change in total employment in the mining and minerals exploration sector in Canada. So no provincial boundaries in here, and it's just about changes in employment. So you're not, it's not total employment, this is a year-over-year change in employment. So as you can see that, you know, we had some fairly optimistic outlooks in 2011 and 2012, 2013, we started saying, you know what, things might start to cool off a bit, few, a few mines may close. We know that there are fairly major operations in New Brunswick, in British Columbia, that are coming to the end of mine life, and they'll be closing down. So that's part of that dip that you see. But you'll see that what we forecast, and again, I'll remind you, we were very, very conservative in our estimates, was that, you know, generally speaking, there might be a little bit of a contraction in employment, but roughly speaking, not a lot of change in total employment in the industry. What I'm going to add now is that second piece. Okay? So this is the non-retirement exit rates from the mining industry. This, again, is based on MIR's internal research about how many people leave jobs in our industry for non-retirement reasons. So now, we're not talking about the chunk that's retiring yet, I'll show you that in a minute. Right now, all we're talking about is people who decide they're going to go work in telecommunications, or they decide they're going to move to Hong Kong, or they are disabled and are no longer able to work. They withdraw from the labor force for reasons other than retiring. So this is just a straight, you know, voluntary separation, for lack of a better word. Here's what happens when you add the retirement. So as you can see, the hiring requirements in every single year, year over year, regardless of what's happening to total employment, the hiring requirements are positive. And what our data is saying is that if you add up all those columns across all those years to 2021, it's about 112,000 people that are going to have to be hired in the industry. So it's a significant hiring requirement, even if you've got a very modest growth projection. In fact, what we're saying is total employment in the industry may contract, and you still have a huge hiring challenge ahead of you. So let's look at the provincial forecast. So I'm starting to sort of, I totally mean this pun, drill down in the data. So these are the forecasts, well, first I'll show you, this is just, these are across the provinces and regions in Ontario that our MYWIN system currently does forecast for. So there's six regions and provinces. Some of the provinces have been added together just because of, well, for a variety of reasons. In some cases, the numbers are significant, so significantly small that we needed to sort of aggregate it to make it all make sense. But basically, again, on the baseline scenario, that very modest growth scenario, you can see that on this final column here, the average annual growth rate of employment, basically only the prairie areas, which would include Alberta, and we all know what that means, and the territories, which is booming with diamonds right now, are the only two that we've predicted a growth in total employment. But as you can also see, there are significant hiring requirements across the two, five, and 10-year time horizons. So in Ontario, for example, we're looking at, pardon me, in two years, well, by 2013, needing to hire an additional, sorry, this is total employment, so that the total employment in Ontario in two years being around 44,600, and then, you know, falling off slightly, but not, but not by a significant amount. But anyways, this just gives you an idea of, you know, comparing across the provinces. Let's look very specifically at the Ontario hiring requirements. So if you remember that, excuse me, I'm just going to grab a glass of water. So if you remember that, excuse me, I'm just going to grab a glass of water. Sorry. So if you remember the graph that I showed you for all of Canada, this is now the one for Ontario. So if you see in the forecasting model that we used back in the summer report of 2011, this past summer, we were predicting actually quite a significant contraction in employment in Ontario over the course of 2013 through to, say, 2016, and then sort of evening out from there on in. Again, I remind you, we were erring on the side of being cautious in our projections. But if you add to that, people who are leaving the province, or people who are leaving the mining industry for reasons, again, I remind you, other than retirement, we made an assumption here around how many people that would be, and we based that on provincial-level statistics, and then added in the retirement requirements. Now, the retirement, the retirement projections are actually based on an analysis of the demographics of the population in the province. And then it's modified based on the results of our employer surveys that talk about eligibility to retire. So as you can see, again, over the course of the full 10-year time horizon, we're looking at over 15,000 workers being required in Ontario over the next 10 years. So regardless of the fact that total employment might be contracting a little bit, the pressure on employers to find new workers to fill the empty positions, mostly from replacement workers, is huge. And don't forget that little added challenge that I put in there. The guys that are retiring are leaving with all the knowledge and skills and experience. And we're replacing them with new people. And we have to figure out a way of not only getting new people to come into the industry, but of retaining and maintaining the skill level and the experience level in our workforce. So let's have a look at the data for this group. And this is the first time anyone's seen this. So I'm going to use that bad pun again and say we're drilling down one more level. And now we're talking about a regional requirements analysis. And this is a really new and exciting part for us. And so we started the process by conducting key informant interviews and employer survey, which just gave us a feel for what are the similarities and differences between the challenges that are facing the Thunder Bay region in, in northern Ontario here, and the challenges that are facing us as a nation? And were they that significantly different? Were there other things we'd need to add to the forecasting model in order to accurately project what the challenges were here? So here's some of the answers we got from our employer interviews and surveys. Tight labor market, no big surprise. We're in a highly competitive labor market, they said to us. We are competing with other sectors, we're competing with other areas of the province, we're competing with the big cities. We have, you know, isolated working conditions, you know, everybody wants to live in the city. Some people love fly-in, fly-out, other people hate fly-in, fly-out. These are the challenges that come from competition for labor. Second piece, worker demand is outstripping supply. Well, that's not surprising either. There are people out there who are looking for jobs. There are people out there with skills that we'd like to get into our industry. But we have such a high level of demand that even within our industry itself, it's introducing this, remember, I talked about this inter-firm competition for the talent that is out there. So the demand, even within our industry itself, is outstripping the supply quickly. The third piece is around that projected growth. We all have heard about the ring of fire, we all know that there's deposits out there, we are all anxious to get them going. But again, that projected growth and, and being able to properly plan for that growth is a huge challenge in terms of how do I determine my hiring requirements? How do I know what skill sets I'm looking for? You know, your skill sets on an individual mine site change from when you go to, from a construction phase, where you're building the mine, to a production phase, right through to a closure phase and a reclamation phase. So the, the skill mix on your job site changes depending on what phase you're in as well. Highly mobile workforce? Absolutely, absolutely. Within Ontario, a hugely highly mobile workforce. But further than that, it's a highly mobile workforce outside of Ontario. So how much more for an individual region within a province is there going to be an added pressure from that mobility issue? The aging workforce? There it is again, we've all heard it. And then also, the, the issues around engaging appropriately with our Aboriginal partners in developing the mining industry. And our, and the employers in this district, just like everywhere else in the country, absolutely recognize the essential component and part and, and partnership that has to happen with our Aboriginal communities in order to move forward in developing our mines. So here's the numbers. This is a new table, so I'll walk you through it slowly. Again, the change in employment, remember I said that there are, you know, these three basic components of what drives the hiring requirements? One is what comes, the change in employment that comes from either growing or contracting your total labor force in the mining industry. The second two are around replacement costs. So the first column there is what's going to happen. It's the demand for hiring new workers because people are retiring. And the second column under replacement cost is that non-retirement separation rate. People leave the industry, they leave the province, they leave the region, they, they, they go to Hong Kong. And then finally, what you end up with in that third column there is the total cumulative hiring requirements. So it basically, it doesn't add perfectly. You know, us economists, we always like to add that note at the bottom that says, nothing actually adds up, so don't bother getting out your calculator because it doesn't really add up because we round all the numbers in behind, and you can be out by tens and even hundreds. So like, just don't bother doing it, they don't add perfectly. And the truth is that the magic breadmaker called MyWin spits out numbers right to the .5689 of a person, and you really don't want to see the projections that say .6895 of a person is going to need to be hired. So what we do is we round everything to the nearest 10, unless it's a bigger number than 10,000, and then we round it to the nearest 100. So it doesn't add across the columns, but it's close. Okay, so let's have a look. The contractionary scenario. As you can see, it's a contraction, it really is a contraction. The labor force is getting smaller. It's getting smaller by 410 people over the course of the 10-year time horizon. But again, you've got positive hiring requirements of over 1,000 people. Why? Because people are retiring and they're going to Hong Kong. In, in the baseline scenario, you've got a modest growth rate in the labor force. I should say from the beginning that what we used as a base for the, for employment for the region was 20, 2,125 workers. So that was in 2011, that was what we recorded as the total employment at that time. So these are changes, well, these are, these are actually quite significant changes. So 660 workers, that's like an increase of almost 40% in your workforce. And then, and then, so you can see that the total hiring requirements are requiring you to basically double your workforce. And then in the expansionary scenario, even more so. So you can see a huge jump in the total employment. So right there, you're adding an additional 15, 1,500 jobs. And then, you know, your total hiring requirements, because of all those people leaving for Hong Kong and retiring and maybe doing both at the same time, end up being about 4,150. How am I doing? Okay, I'm going to speed up because I understand everybody's hungry. Sorry, Madge. Okay. So there's this graph again. So we start with, this is the growth in employment. I want to remind you of the difference between this and the Ontario graph. The Ontario graph had no growth in total employment. We are projecting growth in the total employment in the mining industry in this district. Add to that all those folks that are, again, that are leaving for non-retirement reasons, and there's those retirement people. So you can, you can see, first of all, strong differences in the regional characteristics compared to the provincial. There's positive growth in the labor force, there's the demographic challenges, large outmigration, and we made assumptions around the outmigration from this region being even higher than it is at the provincial level. Why? Because you've got people that are leaving the mining industry in this region and going to work in the mining industry in another part of the province. That's not a loss to the province, but it sure is a loss to this region. So those are the questions that have added to these forecasts. And then again, that same baby boom bubble is working its way through, and all us gray-haired people will go soon. Well, mine's a bit fake, but we'll all go soon and relax and, and leave it to the young people to take care of things properly. Okay. Here's some occupational data. So what the MyWin system does is, once it does these forecasts on total employment and hiring requirements, then it says, well, okay, I'm an employer, I know I need to hire all these people, but what occupations am I looking for? You know, it's, it's a big difference if I'm hiring an engineer versus an accountant or a lawyer, or, and they're all needed. So we broke it up into these occupational groupings, and we used, again, we use Statistics Canada data for specific occupations, employment in specific occupations. We made an assumption that the proportion of workers in each of those occupational groupings would roughly stay the same over the 10-year period. And here's what comes out. So the highest demand is really in the trades and those what we call labor occupations or undesignated occupations. These are the non-trade occupations. So there's trades, and then there's the, what we have, and I have to tell you, tell this little sidebar story, what we have to our shame called unskilled workers for a long time. And they are anything but unskilled workers. These are people who are blowing up things under your feet. They are not unskilled, they are operating drills, and they're taking their lives in their hands while they're doing it. They have, they are highly skilled workers that up until now have not been recognized. So that's that group of people up there. Those are the production miners, those are the mill operators, those are the heavy equipment operators in the open pits, that's that level. So you're looking at, conservatively speaking again, about 1,280 people needed in the next 10 years in those groupings. And then you can see the progression from there. The second highest group is this thing that's called all other occupations. That is a huge mismatch of, of folks that didn't fall into any of those other categories, right down to things like the cooks in the camps. But then subsequent to that, the supervisors and coordinators and foremen are the, are the next. So I would propose that those two groups of people, the trades and labor occupation, and the supervisors and coordinators and foremen are primarily those primary production people. They're the guys that are pulling the ore out of the ground and processing it onsite. What are the challenges for the Thunder Bay district? So bear with me, I'm almost there. So here are some of the observations that we've taken from the data that we've, that we've shown you now. Demographics are indicating that the industry in Thunder Bay will be losing workers with managerial and leadership experience and with length of experience in their given occupation. That is a key issue that needs to be dealt with, and a strategy should be developed to develop, to address that. Again, the average age of retirement in this region was confirmed at somewhere in around 59 and a half years. This is far below the national average for the labor force, which is around 62 years of age. So your labor force is retiring earlier. Workers in exploration, particularly in the geosciences and the technician roles, retire at a slightly older age, so they are retiring around the national average, around 62. But there's still evidence that this segment of the mining workforce lacks workers in the mid-career range. So again, I'm going back to that issue around depth of experience. It's one thing to be trained, it's another thing to have the experience. A whole load of issues around addressing the Aboriginal partnerships that must be effective in order to move forward in developing the industry. They're such an important source of talent for the district. Many employers in the region are already enacting proactive strategies, but there may be value in sharing those strategies amongst employers and in developing a concentrated effort to adequately and sufficiently engage with our Aboriginal communities. About, particularly about enabling training opportunities is particularly important. And assisting local communities that will stay local. And again, remember, I talked about this huge exit rate. We, we made larger assumptions about people who are leaving the industry for reasons other than retiring because we're assuming that they're highly mobile. But what we do know about our Aboriginal partners and communities is that they do like to stay close to home. And that our mines don't move around the country, and that it makes very good sense to develop engagement strategies that allow us to fully make use of the talent and the skills that are available. And to consider those education and industry partnerships that will advance education opportunities, particularly for local Aboriginal communities. Another component is around engaging appropriately with our, with our women population. Remember, I, one of my first questions was, where are all the women? Well, they're out there, but we have to figure out the appropriate ways of engaging with women. Women employed in the, in the industry, as I mentioned before, are primarily occupying administrative and clerical roles. There are surveys that indicate that women are underrepresented, particularly in this region, and that we have to remove those potential barriers and enhance those opportunities for women to move into those production-level roles. Remember, that's the importance of the, you know, differentiating between the occupations that are going to be required. It's not that many clerical and administrative roles that are required. These, it's the front-end production guys, and I mean guys when I say, that we got to replace, and some of them got to be replaced with women. And we've got to, women have got to be given the opportunity and the, and the depth of experience to be able to assume those roles, and the supervisory and management roles as well. Okay, here's the supply-side stuff that is still hush-hush and under wraps, but you're getting it today just for fun. We have been working over the last year, and we'll be publishing in the early summer, the projections on talent availability by occupation across the country by province. What I have to share with you today is the provincial-level data for Ontario, but we can draw some conclusions about what that means for this region from this data. So here it is. It's for the same 66 occupations that you saw the demand forecast for. This now talks about the total entrance into all industry sectors. So this isn't just mining, this top row here. This is all industry sectors in the 66 occupations that are the most common occupations in mining. Keep in mind, we're in competition for at least half of those occupations with forestry, with manufacturing, with a whole load of other industries. So the total entrance is just under half a million people by the end of 2022, the forecast period that you saw for the district. Now, mining traditionally, and that's for Ontario, I should say. So this is all occupy, all 66 occupations, all industry sectors in Ontario. And then the second line is, we've looked at what has mining's traditional share of being able to attract those workers into the industry? So how has the mining industry, what proportion of the total, that half a million folks that are going to come out of our colleges, they're going to immigrate from other places where they've got experience in those occupations, they're going to, you know, where are they coming from? They're, they're graduating from school, they're coming into the country from other places. In Ontario's case, they may be coming into the province. In Ontario's case, they may be coming into the province from other provinces, but they're in those occupations, they classify themselves as being in those occupational groupings. Okay? Mining has traditionally only attracted a very small proportion of those groups, as you can see. So, we had a look at the historical data, and basically, it said roughly about 10,000 of those half a million people would end up working in those occupations in the mining So, what does that mean? Well, it means that based on the hiring requirements I just showed you, by 2020, we're going to roughly have to hire, conservatively, 2,125. That's that baseline scenario. Or, in an expansionary situation, about 4,500. Mining's total share in Ontario is only 10,000. So, you're looking at anywhere between 20, just over 20% and almost 40% of mining's total share of all those occupations that you're going to have to attract here in this district if you're going to be able to fill all those hiring requirements that you have. So, there's a big gap. There's a big gap because we know that this isn't the only part of Ontario that's doing mining. And it's not the only part of Ontario that's experiencing the same kind of pressures on the same kind of occupations that you're facing. We need some strategies. I'm almost done, bear with me. Some strategies that you can pursue and that you probably are pursuing already is around promoting those careers in mining, particularly promoting them with Aboriginal communities, with the other underrepresented groups. Again, what you saw, almost 40% of our workforce is over 50. Where are all the youth? Where are those kids going? Workers in other provinces, new immigrants to Canada, all of those things. Promoting Northern Ontario as a community of choice for those underrepresented groups too. And this is kind of interesting. A couple of years ago, there was a StatsCan publication that talked about new Canadians and their economic integration in communities. And it talked about the difference between urban areas and small rural areas of the country. And the data from StatsCan says that new Canadians reach economic parity with existing Canadians 13 times faster in a small rural community than they do in the city. And in some cases, new Canadians never reach income parity in the urban centers. Mining needs to do a lot better job at making that well-known to our new Canadians. Come to the mining industry, come to the rural areas of our country. We will make you welcome and you'll reach income parity way faster than you ever will in the city. Support career awareness and outreach through various associations, in particular, support this Northern Superior Workforce Planning Board in their efforts to promote this industry as an industry of choice. Adopt industry brands like Mears Explore For More. And I've brought some Explore For More material here, and Madge, I'll get you to maybe make it available somewhere if people want to have a look. It's a useful tool, it's got career profiles and all kinds of information in it. Engage, educate, and train and provide employment opportunities for unemployed segments of the workforce. And create a community of practice amongst the regional employers in attracting new talent. So, I think that there are opportunities here for increasing mining share of the available talent. So, that's the slice of the pie that you're going to get from the available talent. The second piece is about growing that pie, making it a bigger pool overall. So, what can the government and associations and service agencies do about growing that pie, making available talent bigger? We need to explore some flexibility in training programs and around apprenticeships to help develop new workers faster. We need to increase industry participation in task force and planning boards and committees because without the industry voice at the table, there can be non-government organizations, organizations like the Workforce Planning Board, organizations like Mears, but without the industry voice there, we can't go forward. We need industry at the table. We need to encourage graduates to remain in local areas and to provide work experience programs that create attractive living and working conditions, making ourselves not only an employer of choice, but a community of choice. Facilitating communications between employers and educational institutions, this is a key component of any strategy moving forward. Training, 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 training has been mentioned over and over again. One of the big questions that never quite gets answered is, if the communication of needs from industry to the educators is broken some way, it's difficult for the education institutions to respond to those needs. So, we need to find ways of articulating those needs very well. But the second thing is, we need to recognize that it takes time to develop a program, and then it takes time to get your trainees through that program, graduated, out in the work experience, and getting that important hands-on, there's nothing that can replace that hands-on work experience. And remember, we talked about, you know, it's not just people that are retiring, it's whole skill sets learned over years and years of actually doing these jobs. Facilitate, sorry, and enhance the access to pre-employment and in-house training programs, in particular, to ensure access and smooth transitions from training into employment. Because what happens is, you gear up a program, you run a program, you graduate people, and then what happens? They need to work in the industry, they need an opportunity to hone and practice those skills and become competent in using those skills. I actually had a young man speak to me at one of the certification ceremonies that we held last May when we launched our Canadian Mining Certification Program. And he came up to me afterwards and he said to me, "You know, Barb," he said, "I have a degree in mining technology from the States." He said, "But you know what? My degree says that I know some things about mining. My certification says I know what to do with that knowledge." It's a big difference about having the opportunity to practice, hone, and perfect your skills on the job than it is to learn something in a classroom, do well on a test, but then never be given an opportunity to exercise those skills in the workplace. Here's a little quote from Ernst &amp; Young. They publish an annual business risks document. Their quote basically says that the skills shortages is the second biggest risk to the industry being able to grow, expand, and thrive within Canada. And we better be paying attention to the skills shortage and the labor shortage because it's going to get away from us and we need to take some concrete actions now. Here's some information about where we're going with our research for industry sustainability. I won't belabor the point on that. My name is Barbara Kirby. My email is up there. Anyone who would like to contact me, please feel free. I thank you very much for your attention, and I do realize I stood between you and your lunch. So, I hope I didn't bore you too much with the numbers, but it's something that I feel is very important for us all to keep in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Thanks for joining us. You're welcome.
Now, just before we do break for lunch, are there any questions for Barbara on the study and the key findings that she just presented? Yes, David Farrell.
I'm David Farrell from Ovoro Manager Systems and the Workforce Planning Board. My question is, we have a number of 4,100 jobs we're going to have to fill. There must be somewhere we made the, is that confirmed, mines that are going to start up? Does it include, for instance, the ring of fire which is still in the projected stage?
Okay. The short answer is yes. Basically, what we did with this being the first sub-provincial study, we qualified all of the inputs to the model by conducting research with the industry employers in the region, both through a survey and through key informant interviews. So, my understanding, and I didn't actually conduct this actual research itself, but my understanding is that in that baseline, that very conservative baseline scenario, they have included three of the advanced mining projects that they're expecting to go into production in the next two years. And in the expansionary scenario, they actually included an additional five, so that would be a total of eight expansion projects.
Thanks, Barb. Any other questions? No? I do have one, actually. You were mentioning in one of the slides about the need to improve communication between employers and the educational system. And I'm certainly aware of interest from employers and the educational system because they're all present here today, or a number of them are, and in discussion, they're certainly agreeable to that and interested to prepare the workforce for what lies ahead. But as the Sector Council for Mining, do you have any creative examples of what has worked in the past between setting up communications for those that you could share with us?
Absolutely. Well, one of the first things we did, and as I mentioned in the skills learning and mobility programming area, and the focus of my presentation today was really on the labor market research, but another whole component of what I'm responsible for at the Mining Industry Human Resources Council is all around the skills learning and mobility initiatives. And so, a big thrust of what we've done there has been, first of all, the establishment of national occupational standards for those unrecognized occupations, which I described earlier to you. As a huge part of that, we have engaged with both employers, sorry, I shouldn't say both, with employers, with actual job incumbents to do the occupational analysis, and with the training organizations that run training programs that feed into those occupations. So, the occupational standards analysis has been a big component towards getting this dialogue going back and forth between employers and what they need in terms of skills and competencies within the workforce, and employers. The second piece is around using those occupational standards to develop an accreditation program. What the accreditation program is going to do, and we're just finishing our pilot phase right now for that, is it's going to allow industry to work together with the training organizations that are doing training for those occupations. It allows them to go in, look at the program learning objectives and outcomes, and to match those up with the occupational standards, and to make suggestions. So, what we do is, we bring an industry or two industry subject matter experts in to work together with the training organization and figure out where continuous quality improvement efforts can be made for the graduates from that program. The offshoot of that is that by bringing those education institutions and the employers together, there's all kinds of other magic things happening. So, for example, one diamond drilling program that we were looking at at one of the community colleges was mentioning that on their on-campus drill site, that they were missing certain pieces of equipment or that perhaps their drill site wasn't set up quite the way it would be properly in industry. And what has allowed, what has been allowed to happen now is that because they have this expert advice from the industry expert, they are now able to go to the provincial government and say, you know, "We need to replace this piece of equipment or these things need to be done in order to bring our program up to standard and allow our training site to properly reflect a real work site." And so, there's all kinds of creative things like that that are starting to happen. And then, I'll just mention one other thing. We're currently working together with a number of the community colleges to develop a specific program around Aboriginal education and training programs, those training-to-employment programs that are being run specifically designed to engage better between the mining industry employers and Aboriginal communities.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for Barbara? No? All right. Well, thank you very much, Barbara. And I would like to mention, thank you. And I would like to point out that the executive summary for that, for the report findings has now been posted on our website, and that can be found at www.nswpv.ca. And we'll also be posting the full report as soon as it's completed and finalized. So, one of the things, and I hate to put her on the spot, but one of the other things that was mentioned in Barbara's presentation was certainly looking at, when you're establishing communications or whatever, it's always good to look back to successful best practices that have been very effective. And one of the ladies that happens to be in the audience is Teresa Ogama-Hall, and I don't want to put her on the spot, but Teresa, could you stand up? She has been instrumental in working on establishing successful agreements with First Nations groups, and so she may well be one of the women that you definitely want to approach today. So, thank you very much. It is lunchtime. Thank you so much for being so patient this morning. I hope you've heard some speeches that have intrigued you and you have some additional questions or you know who you need to speak to over the lunchtime. At this point, I'd like to call upon Jennifer, and she's going to take over and announce which tables will be able to access the buffet lunch, first of all, so we can try to facilitate that and get you all fed in a timely manner. Thank you very much.